I'd like to call the order that Tuesday, March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, Brooklyn City Board of Education regular meeting. Mr. Sheehart, will you call the role, please?
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Hobbit.
Here.
Ms. Rafter.
Here.
Mr. Rosarino.
Here.
Ms. Crawl.
Here. Please stand for the pledge. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its form. In order for the board to fulfill its obligation to complete the planned agenda in an effective and efficient fashion, a maximum of thirty minutes of public participation as it pertains to school-related topics will be permitted in each meeting. Each person wishing to address the board will approach the podium and state his or her name and address. If several people wish to speak, each person will be allotted three minutes until a total time of thirty minutes is used. During that period, no person may speak twice until all who desire to speak have had the opportunity to do so. The period of public participation may be extended by a vote of the majority of the board. Is there anybody wishing to speak?
Yes. I timed it one hundred and three minutes. I tried twice, so I'm gonna start the timer on quick.
Good evening, everyone. I stand here as a father, spouse, tax-paying homeowner, who now because of this aspires to be on this very board. Even now, talking to parents and citizens, a large part of our school community remains uninformed and unaware of the facts of this open enrollment initiative. Let me state this: I support the employees' grandparents, Brooklyn connected exemptions. I said that multiple times. What stirred me into action was the timing of it, specifically after the levy passed and the quietness of which all this passed through. I wavered initially. I was nervous that my son might face backlash from coaches, and my wife was a substitute teacher in the district who would receive a cold reception because of my viewpoints. She loves the children being in the classroom, but shares same sentiments on this issue as me. Our son's educational environment and well-being is a matter of the highest priority for us, but I still went for it because I think it is the right thing. On March first, I filed the public records request on the board and superintendent regarding open enrollment dialogue. I received that today, five-thirty. I'll boomerang back to that at a later time. I have more to say about that. I received very clear and informative information on the upgrades of the facilities, but very quiet on who's gonna be inside those beautiful upgrade facilities. That is a strategy to divert attention to the issue. Every dollar, all the teachers' time and attention, art programs, theater productions, sport roster spots, musical solos, lab projects, and on the personal level, all the smiles, the laughs, the hugs, the discipline should go to our one thousand one hundred and twenty-nine kids. We are stable, in the own words of the board, on enrollment and fiscally sound. Maybe later conversations have to be had, but if they do, they have to be loud and open, not quiet behind closed doors. With all the enormous uncertainty on the state and federal level in regards to school funding, it's an awful decision that you guys have made to open our Brooklyn schools at this time. Some parents or community members may disagree with me. I want their views and why. Dialogue yields insight, never diminishment. My ears are always open and I'm always ready to learn from someone. Even here this evening, there are people who may disagree or say I'm wrong. That's fine. I just hope that when they go out for read, it's not a typed-up rebuttal written or thought of by someone else and read out loud at meetings as a personal friendly or a political favor. Real talk matters. I'll always talk real, not the optics of a narrative or to push cover on an issue that may be controversial. Finally, I'll sum it up clearly: Brooklyn resources stay with Brooklyn children. It's simple. That's my fight from day one. Our kids deserve every bit of what we have and voted to give them. Keep Brooklyn small, keep it smart, and keep it strong. Thank you.
Anybody else who wants to speak?
Hello. My name is Danielle. I forget, directed my address. Nine-eight-two-nine Memphis Phillips Boulevard. Okay. Um, I just, I'm grateful to be here today. First time on camera. But I just would like to keep it real, amen? That I am trusting the process. I have talked with other people who have attended the board meetings as well. Just, you know, it's scary. I understand. Opening the district, fear is real, like the fear of the world is real, right? Amen. But we continue to kind of look at, you know, what this can bring to the district in a way of bringing in families and supporting families to be a part of the community, right? That's been talked about, about how to support the families to be involved in the children since they're driving here. So I see that as, I know there's gonna be a very diverse, not group, I mean, it could be from any suburb. There's a lot of suburbs that are hurting right now. And ones, you know, so I'm hopeful that the right students for our district that will really be assets to our students and our families and just the unity, right? Amen. And the diversity and the perspective and the strengths and all aspects, arts and athletics and wisdom and all the things will be brought to our district, you know, during the open enrollment process and the discernment of that. So I just wanted to bring another real aspect, right, of kind of the hope that I'm actually, I'm kind of, I'm keeping an open mind, right, and that the board has been very receptive and overall just to the conversation, the dialogue of the public, you know, this opportunity. So I just wanted to also kind of bring that side as well, that, you know, we're just gonna take it one step at a time and look how to bring unity to this district, right, and then just, and new perspective and hopefully new families to really enjoy and just really be excited to be a part of the Brooklyn community that might not otherwise have the opportunity to. Hey, there we go. Have a good day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, then we will move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Claire's.
Good evening, Ms. Crawl. Wanted to take a little bit of time, first of all, welcome to everybody and thank you for the comments. Take a little bit of time to go over an update. A little miscommunication with me. I know we were supposed to have a student presentation. They weren't able to come this evening, so then we'll have that student presentation back in April. So I wanted to give the board a little bit of an update. Incident a couple weeks ago with our delayed dismissal and lockdown drill and really, I've said this a couple of times, I went to the city council meeting last week just to really thank our Brooklyn Police Department, our safety forces, the city of Brooklyn, and really our families and our students and our staff for the amazing response to that lockdown drill and to that delayed dismissal. We were very fortunate that it was a non-emergency emergency, so to speak, and really the biggest impact we had in the district level was to have to dismiss two parents in person. But that allowed us to kind of really review our procedures and work on our communication practices within and externally. And so again, just a big kudos and a thanks to everybody involved. And as always, if you have any questions or comments or just how you felt about the situation, I received a lot of good feedback via email from our staff and from our parents. And so again, to anybody listening, if you have comments or feedback on that and how we can get better or how we can learn from it, please, please reach out to me. Just a quick update on the strategic plan. The construction on the early childhood center and family resource center has started. We are scheduled to be done with that construction sometime in August, and so I should have an update for the board with specifics at our April work session, but that construction is going well. In May, actually, May nineteenth, we're gonna start demolition and construction, the high school main gym, and we're very excited for that initial part, initial phase of the construction. We'll look to replace the stadium turf right after commencement in May. And remember, as a reminder, part of that funding for the stadium field has been awarded through a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant from the NFL. So thank you to Mr. Neal for sending me a text one day saying, hey, why don't you apply for this? And I said sure, and two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars later, we're very fortunate to have it. One of the things that we're working as an administrative team and staff this spring is we're looking at collecting our data points and evidence regarding our twenty-four-twenty-five strategic plan. And so in our June work session, I'm gonna have a summary for the board, and that will be our work session in terms of when we go over our strategic plan, kind of hear from me in terms of all our departments, but also get feedback from the board in terms of how you think everything went and just hear your thoughts on progress. We are exploring a partnership with Metro Health, sneak peek for what Mrs. Jones is gonna talk about in about a month, but this will be part of our family resource center. Looking at some pending district grant applications, Ms. DeLeese and her team is working on a literacy grant. We're hoping this is up to six-hundred-thousand-dollar grant we're applying for, if we can get it, and we're still waiting on word about the advanced energy grant that we applied for earlier in January. That's about an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar grant, and that would help with some boiler and HVAC replacements at the high school level. We're working on our spring quality profile, and then of course, we are celebrating our students this spring with all the end-of-the-year activities. And speaking of end-of-the-year activities, this week is our annual musical presentation. This year, it's the Wizard of Oz, March twentieth, twenty-first, seven o'clock, and then on that Saturday, the twenty-second, two P.M. and seven P.M. So encouraging everybody in the community, staff, students, families, to attend the Wizard of Oz. One of the things we're doing on April twelfth, we're actually doing two events. First event from ten o'clock to one o'clock is we're allowing any community member, any alumni, family, student that wants to walk through the high school board office, the different classrooms before we begin those renovations, just give people an opportunity to just come back and visit. I know when I give the alumni tours all the time in the summer, it's always a great time to hear all the stories from our old alumni. So that is open to everybody. No need to register, just show up ten to one on that day. Also, we have a pre-K through three event that day in the afternoon, our spring extravaganza literacy event for our pre-K through third graders, hoping to just celebrate all things literacy, have a little bit of fun. This does not conflict with city events. I know the city has something going on in the morning, ten-thirty, eleven, egg hunt on Brooklyn City schools at one o'clock. Plenty of time for everybody to get two egg hunts in during the day. So make sure that they're here for that. Coffee chats, again, I want to thank Mr. Fincham for showing up on Saturday, but I have three more, twenty-ninth, May third, April twenty-sixth and May third. If you want to come talk all things school district, and so love to have you, can meet in the board lobby, and we can just talk, have some coffee and eat some bad donuts for you. All right, an update on enrollment, and again, with all the conversations regarding open enrollment and applications and just student enrollment in general, just wanted to give the board a preliminary update of where we're at with everything. I will have a full analysis and update at our May work session, so more to come. This is just a preview. Current enrollment to this date is one thousand one hundred and thirty students. That includes both internal and anybody on an outplacement type of setting. From an open enrollment application standpoint and also new residents, we've had about thirty new residents apply. Now, remember, we're gonna get new preschoolers and new kindergartners. I would assume between our preschool and kindergarten, we'll see another sixty to eighty applications of new students with us. About half of our preschoolers rise to be kindergarters. That means about half of our kindergartners have not been in our preschool. So we'll see about sixty to eighty new students just in preschool and in kindergarten. We'll probably see another twenty to thirty new resident applications for Brooklyn residents. Open enrollment application data, we've had fifty-seven applications, thirty-four have been accepted, obviously twenty-two are still under review, and one of those applications have been denied. So just kind of some preliminary information for the board, April eighteenth is the last day for open enrollment applications. Couple key takeaways, and I think this is, you know, as this is our first year doing this process and exploring open enrollment, here's some key takeaways that I've seen with the data. Ninth grade has seen the most applications with twenty-one. What does that tell me? Tells me that rising ninth graders, families are looking for high school opportunities for their students. So that's where we've seen the most applications. This is not new data, but seventeen of our staff members' children who are non-residents are currently here, but they will be considered open enrollment. So I just want to give you that. We have seventeen staff member kids who attend our district. Preschool, we have not accepted applications for an open enrollment standpoint because lots of dynamics in preschool, and so we do not have capability to fill those slots. Kindergarten, fourth grade currently is closed or on a waiting list, basically not taking applications in those grade levels. First and sixth grade have not seen any applications from an open enrollment standpoint. Majority of the applications were submitted the week of three-three, so right when it first opened, we saw about forty-nine applications, and since then, we've seen about eight applications that have been submitted, right? Just some telling data in terms of what we've seen at the central office district level. Want to talk a little bit about athletic activity participation trends. Just talk about some different things in terms of enrollment in those, in these areas. You can see we've seen an increase in our students participating in various sports over really the last, we don't have the two thousand and twenty-one school year, that was the COVID year. We really didn't have a lot going on there. Many people did it. Our kids are doing things. However, we do have some sports, some programs that I currently have some questions about. One of the things I want to talk about from a positive standpoint is we started our intramural program this year, Mr. Zofka, Mr. DeAngelis, grades three through twelve, it's gonna be happening over the next six weeks, got about fifty-six, fifty-seven students participating. Just awesome. Today was the first day. I just love it.
In the field house?
Actually, it's in the high school main gym. High school main gym, absolutely. Started indoor track this year. It was one of the things that Mr. Zofka and I talked about last summer. I said, you know what? The worst thing that can happen is we don't have enough kids to run the program. Fifteen kids signed up for indoor track and participated on and off throughout that short season. And then girls' flag football, kind of run it as an intramural club sport this year. We have about fifteen young ladies participating. Sport is growing. Rumors that OHSAA may recognize it as a sport, varsity sport next year, but again, just great opportunities for kids. We're looking, and I'll talk a little bit about this in May, talk to Mr. Zofka, looking at some other sports potentially try to start, swim team maybe, maybe cross-country. Want to give our kids opportunities to do things outside of the classrooms. Couple question marks, couple concerns from my end, wrestling, steady numbers, not great numbers. We fluctuated between our girls and boys varsity program this year, somewhere between seven and ten athletes. And so, little bit of a concern there, middle school. So we're, Mr. Zofka and I are working on some conversations with Coach Kio in terms of what can we do from a youth standpoint, maybe next fall to help bolster some of those numbers. And then our girls' program, had a tough year with our girls. We had four rock-solid girls that finished the season. Obviously, not enough to run the program, but kudos to those four young ladies and our coaching staff who finished the year. Good news is, we got a strong eighth-grade class coming up, and so hopefully, we see those numbers rebound next year. One of the things that I think is really a testament to why we're starting to see some number increases in some of our sports and some of our intramurals, is I talked to Mr. Bruzy, Commissioner of the city, sent me over his report from fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four. So this is last year data, nothing this year. But you can see between resident and non-resident students, the city of Brooklyn has done a great job with encouraging our younger students in this general area, both the Brooklyn area and the old Brooklyn area, to participate in sports. And so, like for example, I see the swim team right there. Okay, we have nine resident students that are interested or doing some type of swim team. What does that mean for us from a varsity standpoint? What could we, how could we capitalize on some of those things? You look at mini canes basketball. This is the Mr. Bowlin class that he's run the last couple of years. Sixty residents, eighteen non-residents, seventy-eight pre-K through second graders participated in that program, which that kind of directly leads to some of the intramural numbers we're seeing at the school. St. Thomas More, Heritage Christian, and Brooklyn students are considered residents in this data, whether they live in Brooklyn or not, because talked to Mr. Bruzy, that they charge them resident rates as long as they attend those schools within the city of Brooklyn. So you can see some great numbers. We're starting to see the benefits of this youth program. And again, that goes back to the partnership that we have with the city in terms of facilities and programming and just to help incorporate. We want our kids to do things outside of the classroom. And then I'll end with this quote, and then I'll open it up with any questions. Brooklyn is a better place when all kids are involved, and so I'm a firm believer that one of our primary responsibilities in this district is to make sure kids, all kids, have various opportunities, whether it's clubs, athletics, whatever it may be. We want our kids doing things outside the classroom. That being said, that's my report. Any questions?
Are you, what's the district doing to further the advertising for the open enrollment since we had such a huge influx in the beginning, and it's kind of tapered off?
Yeah.
Where we have implied?
Right now, Ms. Rosarino, we're, all we do is, it's really been word of mouth and posted on our website. We have not done any active advertising. I think I originally said that way back in November, December, we're not gonna actively advertise. I think, you know, I think my initial estimate was somewhere around seventy-five students. I'll be honest with you, I think we're on track to be a little bit below that based on these numbers. Now, we could get some, we can get an influx in the next, you know, two, three weeks, but remember, grade level capacity is, there's a, and I'll explain this at our May work session, we've kind of have a foundation on classroom size we want to continue to have, right, at the different grade levels, and we're going to only do open enrollment by not adding additional costs to the district. Easy example, I get so many kids in a grade level, I have to add another teacher. That's not the goal. So we will look at those, but again, I think we're on track to stay right about or below that number. Any other questions?
I was just gonna say, thank you for sharing our schools enrollment, our schools' participation in the sports. And I like seeing, you know, being on the athletic, or being on the red board for so long, seeing that these numbers have gone up.
Real quick, this also, I apologize, this also includes marching band, hurricats, numbers, and also includes esports. So I just wanted to let you know.
Yeah, I like seeing the kids being involved, okay? And these numbers are good. I'm sure you're gonna be working with Mr. Zofka too, like, these numbers that we have for, you know, wrestling. Like, I don't want to lose current sports. I think it's great that we're adding others because we're in a world where things are changing.
Yeah.
And I'm excited about the girls' football and everything, you know, just to be able to keep the rest of the program. And I'm glad to hear that the eighth-grade class, you know, and it may take a couple of years, and that's fine, but I just want to continue to see those numbers. And I think we're balancing with the rec, seeing those numbers, and that's good.
Yeah, very good. Other questions? Thank you, everybody. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to Mr. Sheehart and the Treasurers' report.
Thank you. Good evening. Just wanted to over this and let you know that we have received the second advance from the county for real estate. That came in at one-point-eight million. So at this point, we've received about fifty-nine-point-six percent of our living income for the year. Foundation, which is the state funding, came in at one-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand for the month. That is at sixty percent for the year. Investments came in at sixty-eight-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-two for the month of February. That brings our total investments up to six-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand-and-sixty for the year. Personnel and benefits are running at eighty percent, which we would be considered a service industry kind of, so that's not out of line with what the salaries and benefits would cost. Operations is running about twenty percent. The final settlement from the county, actually, it came in in March fourteenth, so we have received the final settlement in March. That came in at about eight million. So we have collected as much money as we are going to for the rest of this fiscal year from the county for real estate taxes. The other thing is, I received the annual filing. That is something that the district is required to do annually because it's, because we have debt. We have the two-thousand-and-seventeen bonds and the two-thousand-and-twenty-four bonds. So we have to, we do what's called an annual filing, and that's sent into the agency that era. And what it does, it sends it out to all of the people that have purchased our bonds. It's basically our financial statements that are sent out to show how we're doing to them, so they know that we're doing well and can pay off the interest and the principal. I will be doing, I will be going out for insurance quotes. The insurance will renew on seven-one. We're currently using Highland for our property and liability, so I will be doing those quotes, getting those requests out to some different insurance companies, just so we have something to base what our renewal amount will be. Currently, Highland is through the Ohio Schools Council, so I'm not sure without going out and getting quotes if anything would be lower. But I doubt, because it's through OSC, I doubt it will be. I wanted to touch on a, one of the things the board is going to have in front of them later is going to be the electric renewal, and that is also through OSC. That is, the contract is a three-year contract, and it's based on cents per kilowatt hour. I went out and pulled sixteen other companies that do that as well, and they range anywhere from seven cents a kilowatt hour up to thirteen and a half. So the OSC at this point is the best price. They do consortium pricing. We also have our, we also do our gas, natural gas through OSC as well. That will be coming up later on in the year, and I'll bring that to the board for approval as well. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna move on to comments from board members and committee board reports. I'm gonna start the board reports tonight. Please excuse my reading. These are one-hundred percent my words and thoughts. Not the first time I've been questioned. Promise, I'm very capable of speaking for myself. I just like to write things down, so I'm not here spewing word salad. First, I would like to thank all the groups that continue to support Brooklyn City schools and our students, the Music Boosters, Athletic Boosters, Post Prom Committee, the Brooklyn Chamber, Mayor Ron Van Kirk, City Council. Over the last couple of years, clear progress has been made bridging the gap between our city and the schools, and we continue working together for our students and the community. The open enrollment application process has begun with an overwhelming response of support. I have received emails and messages from alumni that are so excited to have the opportunity to send their kids to their alma mater. I know how they feel, and that makes my heart so happy. I would have loved to send my kid to the school where I attended, but I could not afford to live in that city on my own. As I looked for a place to live, I had to take the school districts into consideration as my son was nearing school age, and Brooklyn was the obvious choice. Affordable housing, good schools, and I worked right down the street on Tiedemann at Hugo Boss, and I think that all-day kindergarten and the cats really sealed the deal. My son graduated in two thousand and twenty after a successful educational career. He was senior section leader of Drumline. He played hockey and baseball, and he was in the Pitt Orchestra for four productions. And he attended Polaris for HVAC. I think all kids deserve the quality education and experience he received and should not be discriminated against based on geographical location. Enrollment is down over three hundred students since my son attended. Enrollment is down over three hundred students since my son attended. That's essentially three entire grade levels. We have been steady at an average of eleven fifty over the last few years, but we cannot deny that enrollment has drastically declined. Of course, we will not overwhelm our staff, but why not make good use of our resources on hand and their strengths and love for teaching? If enrollment continues to decline, then we won't need all the staff, or extracurriculars, or coaches. It's easy to say, let's just bring the three hundred back, but I believe in parental choice. There are a myriad of reasons to why families may enroll elsewhere. Those parents have a choice, so let's offer all parents a choice. For me, because I will never speak on behalf of somebody else on the board, open enrollment was never about sports or recruiting athletes. I take such great offense to any insinuation that was our motivation, and I refuse to be bullied over it. When open enrollment was brought up many years ago with previous administration, I was against it because of the parents who thought it was a recruiting tool. To be honest, I could care less about wins outside the classroom if we are not winning inside the classroom. After being properly educated on the matter, I realized how effective and beneficial open enrollment could be for our district and for our youth. As open enrollment was always lingering in the background, I will admit that I was a board member that bumped the discussion back to the forefront. This was not the idea of one person. It was the thoughtful decision of five people who have the district's best interest at heart. And this may be the Board of Education hill I choose to die on, but there was always transparency with our discussions. Many opportunities for questions, and I thank the parents that did reach out with concerns, and I am glad we were able to answer those questions and put your minds at ease. And for the record, the bond issue to renovate a seventy-year-old building in need of repairs beyond fresh paint had nothing to do with open enrollment. Two different board issues. We don't just stop working after one issue is voted on. That being said, yes, we do have another levy on the ballot in May. I started working on the levy committees about ten years ago alongside some of our core Brooklyn families, like the Cobbless and the Flanikins and the Etherages. I learned that levies play an important role in how our schools are funded. I did my due diligence and ensured I was educated enough to go door-to-door with my son promoting something we both believed in. And actually, he did most of the talking, and residents were impressed. And why not? He is a product of Brooklyn City Schools. Administration even made him the face of a social media advertisement after several calls came in about the young man they spoke to regarding issue one. Tried to find it, I can't find it anymore. As a student, he supported Brooklyn City Schools and did what he could since he wasn't old enough to vote. This upcoming levy is a renewal levy that's not increase your taxes, as it only generates a specific dollar amount previously voted on. It's simple algebra, solving for X, your tax payment, which remains constant. If your house valuations go up, the millage use in the calculation goes down, but your tax stays the same. If your house valuations go down and the millage use in the calculation goes up, but your tax stays the same. If anyone has any questions or concerns regarding any possible misinformation being spread throughout the community, please reach out to Mr. Shearhart. He is your best source to obtain accurate information. And he's very busy, so please give him some time to answer. And I hope that you'll continue to support Brooklyn City Schools and our vision to make Brooklyn a destination district because all children deserve a quality education. I have some exciting events coming up. The Wizard of Oz with Dr. Calera's already talked about that. The Spring Craft Show during the community open house on April twelfth. Post-Prom will also have concessions open for that day, lunch and snacks. And Music Boosters is confirmed to be there with spiritware. The Domestic Relations Commission met on March twelfth. We will be posting some flyers with important information and phone numbers regarding teen dating abuse, elder abuse, and domestic violence. We are also going to be holding a spring cleaning clothing drive for Laura's home through City Mission. More details to come. And we will also have a table at the Chamber's Home Days later this summer to share again those informational flyers and phone numbers and other educational resources. I attended the last Athletic Booster meeting, and I would like to shout out Mr. Carl Savannah-David. They came on board late in the game to coach girls' basketball and stayed on to train the girls even after the season was canceled. Thankful for the dedication of these coaches that didn't give up after a premature end to the season. And lastly, I would like to thank the administration staff and Brooklyn Police Department for everything they did two weeks ago to keep our students and city safe. Obviously, a slight inconvenience when routines are disrupted, but we are grateful for the swift and constant communication from Brooklyn Police Department to Brooklyn Schools, to the parents, ensuring our students made it home safely and without incident. And that is my report. We will move on to Ms. Rec.
Thank you. Kelly. I have no committee reports to speak about. I did that at the last meeting. A couple of things, I would like to just thank everybody for coming to the night at the races at the end of last month. It was very well attended. I know they made quite a bit of money. I don't know what the final count was, but to see the number of baskets that people donated, whether it was just individuals, or sport teams, or clubs, it was great to see. I've never seen that, those many baskets at a Brooklyn event. I'd also like to say congratulations to all our winner's sports athletes. I had the privilege of attending the banquet, helped serve, set up, and, you know, I love kids, I love seeing them on the court, I love seeing them on the field, but I really love the banquets because that's their special day, and a lot of, a lot of great recognition for all of them. So I just want to say congratulations on that. And then again, I just kind of want to reiterate what Dr. Calera said. Anytime, whether it's a school district or a council, anytime there's an opportunity for you to come and hear about our city, or come and hear about our school, please come to these little sessions that we have. Dr. Calera reiterated that there's gonna be three more coffee chats. And last time he had coffee chats, what was it, before?
Last year.
It was in the fall, the run.
Last year.
Yeah. I attended just about every one, and I was kind of taken back by the number of people that the opportunity was there, they didn't come. I stopped in this past week, so I trusted you were there. But to get people to come to find out what's going on in the school and in our district, like, hear it firsthand. Don't hear it on Facebook, you know, I mean, you could, but, you know, hear it firsthand. And then the next thing I just want to say too, when is it, the twelfth? April twelfth? Or no?
April twelfth.
When's the city? City and Schools address?
April sixteen.
Sixteen, okay? I went to that last year, and to hear Mayor Van Kirk and Dr. Calera speak, we really are a partnership. And I think that if you're able to come in the morning at ten AM, please come, you'll learn a lot. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Hubble.
Thank you. President. Couple announcements. Want to thank the Brooklyn Police Department, the Brooklyn Schools, all the admin and the staff that did a fantastic job on that day with the light lockdown. I know it was great because my kids, I got home, and they were cool. They were chilling, which is, means that you guys are preparing them, and they knew what was going on, and they weren't scared, which is a blessing for a father to come home to. So thank you so much for that, I really appreciate it. The Wizard of Oz is coming up this week, Break a Leg. It's gonna be, I kind of heard some of the rehearsals, it sounded awesome, so I'm excited to see that. It'll be there on Thursday. Four students were chosen out of a hundred and twenty-five kids throughout the state. Their art was chosen to be hung at a hospital wing down in Columbus. I went because my son was one of them, very proud of him, so it was a really exciting thing to see his art up there with the three other students. Thank you to Mrs. Lowell and Mrs. Becker for submitting those, and congratulations to all four students. April sixteenth is the State of the City, State of the School address, but in the evening, the Brooklyn Chamber of Commerce is hosting a career and job fair that Dr. Calera's and the school's opening up for us in the cafeteria. So we are gonna have, right now, we have seventeen different organizations that are gonna be there, and we're hoping to get twenty-five, so it's gonna be a nice turnout for you to find a job. Look at colleges, universities, and other neighborhood, community organizations that are gonna be there, so really excited about that. This morning, at the Chamber meeting, we were glad to announce that we're bringing back Brooklyn Home Days, so it's going to be a two-day event, which is gonna be in place of the Fall Fest this September, so September twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. It's gonna be a two-day event where we're gonna have our usual Fall Fest activities on the Saturday, and then the Big Band Blowout will be on the Sunday, fireworks on Saturday night. It's gonna be really, really cool. If anybody's interested in helping volunteer, please contact me. We are looking for volunteers to help us out through the process and those two nights. And thank you for Michelle Hippo and everybody that helped out with the Night of the Races. That event is amazing. I mean, how many people? Five hundred?
With the help those up.
I mean, that's incredible, and seeing all the, it was fun, it was cool, and seeing, it's just a great event, so thank you for everybody that did their thing there. And I want to piggyback off, a little bit off of President Kroll said. I am open to anybody disagreeing or having an issue with anything that we come up with. What I don't like is when people say that we're doing backdoor deals and talking behind closed doors. That doesn't happen. It's very frustrating to hear that, because it doesn't happen. We're very transparent. When we speak to each other, when we're here at work sessions, everything happens in the face of the people. And that's the one thing that I can't, I can't take, is people insinuating that anything else is happening. So this was a five-o decision made by five people that care very deeply about the school district. And that's not gonna change. We're gonna make decisions based on what we feel is the best for the school district. And I appreciate any kind of conversation with anyone that disagrees, or can enlighten me on anything different, but we made a good, solid decision that can be changed if we feel, hey, this is not working, stop it, we got one year, that's it. But I feel that it needs to be said, that I think that when someone accuses five good people of doing backdoor deals or anything like that, I think we need to take a step back and reevaluate the way we approach things. And that's my report. Thank you.
Mr. Hubble.
Thank you. So a lot of the stuff I was going to, and harp on's already been said everywhere. The Cleveland Browns, I want to kind of thank this partnership that we have with the Browns and to stay in the game. It's amazing. Earlier in the year, they had a player, they did it last year, that came in and ran drills with kids. Today, they came in with staff members and chumps. Rocky got a nice photo with them. And read to the kids, kind of gave them little goodie bags. My son Max came home with these Macho Man Randy Savage sunglasses and talked about how chill he looked.
Max.
But, I mean, it's awesome. They were even there at the kindergarten kickoff. I mean, they're everywhere, like, this partnership that we built with the Browns and the turf and everything, like, it's been a huge asset that we've been able to find and use, and it's a great way to keep our youth both in the school and involved in that athletic side of things, so it's been amazing. I want to congratulate Adam Cowper. I know everybody knows he went to States, and I saw he finished, it was nineteenth, and I was like, oh, you know, that's pretty good. And then I looked at the list, and it was out of a hundred and ninety-seven kids, so it's really good. So congratulations to Adam, that's phenomenal. Proud of you, man, that's awesome. Got to coach Adam one year in track, he's a great kid, deserves everything, you know, it's awesome for him. Alumni Association met today. Rocky here will talk about the Technology Committee meeting, I kind of double-booked Dr. Calera's already talked about it, we're doing kind of the first kickoff is this event on April twelfth, tied in with the Craft Fair and the Extravaganza, but as Dr. Calera said, everybody, especially alumni, don't have to sign up, come mingle, look at the building one last time before it kind of starts changing the way it looks. Great chance to get everybody back together. There'll be a signup for the alumnis to kind of rebuild a database, so that you can kind of get involved and get updates along the way. The Wizard of Oz, guys, go see it, these kids are awesome. My kids are still talking about The Little Mermaid last year. Can't wait to see it. And just to piggyback off of President Kroll here in Crom, they're absolutely right, this was not, this open enrollment was not taken lightly, it was a lot of discussion, and I just encourage everybody to come to both these YouTube-vised meetings and our work sessions are also public. Come, listen, because this, we did not hide any of this, we talked about it time and time again. If you don't come, you can't hear it. So I just kind of want to reiterate that, you know, again, I'm one of five, but I completely agree with, you know, everything that they said, and that concludes my report.
Mr. Neal.
All right. I'll give you my open enrollment conversation. I've been on the board seventeen years. We've had a pretty intense meeting in here probably ten, eleven, twelve years ago about open enrollment. We also have had other meetings with other board members that were for and against it. I think at one time, not too long ago, it may have passed, it would have been three to two, but it may have been, it may have passed as well, too. Here's the way I look at it personally, I'm fiscally responsible for the district, too. I gotta create revenue. Schools don't create revenue other than tax dollars. So here's the way I look at it, if we brought in, and I'm gonna use a hypothetical, two hundred kids at two thousand dollars apiece, that's four hundred thousand dollars. That's basically probably a one point five levy, you know, mill levy, that's my guess, on an annual basis. That's the way I look at it. As long as any of these board members can tell you that I said with no expenses, if I brought in four hundred thousand dollars with no expenses, I'd be happy as a lark. I think be the right thing to do, that's just my opinion. I think I have a fiscal responsibility to this district and to the students. So that's where I stand. I've been, like I said, the first time we ever had it, it was, it was almost a ruckus in here, it was sort of interesting. But, I mean, people realize that you have to create some type of revenue. So that's my take on open enrollment, and then I'm gonna move on to a couple other items. Just had a Technology Committee meeting. Help Desk, Mr. Wallace, Ms. DeLees and I just met, Mr. Wallace and Mr. Black are doing a wonderful job. Their Help Desk had about as many tickets as they did last year, which is over almost eleven hundred. They're creating an IT Advisory Committee with teachers because of cyber security issues, because of AI issues, so we have to gather all that stuff. So those are important things that are coming down the pike. The, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Wallace, the IT that's gonna be going into the new center is gonna be May fifth through sixteenth, we'll be trying to put that all together. Am I right or wrong?
Yeah, the new line.
Okay, I just want to make sure. The Chromebooks are on a rotation schedule, second, sixth, and tenth grade. Teachers are definitely interested in the new technology. That's, you know, when this first came out, technology, the, these boards and all that stuff, you had to write a grant to get one. Now the teachers just want to do it, they want to be part of it. So there's a lot of good things going as far as technology goes in this school district, and Mr. Wallace is doing a wonderful job along with Mr. Black. So support them a hundred percent. Let me go to, my next one is, you know, is the Polaris report, I'm just gonna hypothetical this one. Polaris's fiftieth anniversary committee's coming. So Polaris is fifty years old. How's that? The new prices for the adult program costs are out, you're probably getting flyers in the mail if you're on their mailer. Practical Nursing is in its third term. Things are getting a little bit tougher with some of the stuff that they're training and doing. Southwest Hospital's a wonderful, wonderful partner there. The STNA Earn and Learn Promotion, they're, I think it's gonna be twelve students that will be earning money while they learn at STN, or getting an STNA degree. It's like eleven or twelve dollars an hour, that. O'Neill Healthcare, I believe they're out of North Ridgeville, pretty sure they are, they're partnering up, so they're doing a wonderful job. Lorraine Community College has partnered up with Polaris as well. The one that I really like is the Cosmetology Seniors, it's called the Night to Shine. All the senior students brought in special needs people to redo their hair, their nails, and all that stuff, so I think that's really cool. We also had a young man in the Skills USA competition, Imani Oatman, in medical math, finished, twelfth grader, finished well in the contest. And then Camp Disguise. And then Camp Discovery is coming. Seventeen class will be offered this year. Twenty teachers participating. Classroom description will be used to create brochure. Registration will be open March twenty-first. That's a summer program. I believe there's two classes are offered in for, they're seventy-five dollars each, so it's a hundred and fifty dollars. And it's a wonderful thing. One in the, one in the morning and one in the, uh, afternoon, excuse me. And then the last thing, something I'm personally involved in in that, there's a shortage of sports officials in the OHSA and in general. If anybody knows, I've been refereeing football for twenty-two years, my twenty-second year, and I've done basketball. So, I personally am starting a, or have, and having a, a, uh, Sports Officials Career Fair at Polaris, April twenty-third from six to eight P M. You'll be able to sit down and find out what a hockey official does, soccer, lacrosse. Any sport in OHSA will be there from a local level. So, there's always recruiting. To be honest, some of the money we're starting to see, like if you're a young kid, you're probably making almost thirty bucks an hour for doing some of those games, between twenty-five and thirty bucks an hour. Even, what we get is a lot of retirees that need an extra buck. There's guys that wear three sports, three, three different sports every year. You know, they make an extra eight, ten thousand or as much as, or as little as you want. You set your own schedule. So, that's something that I'm, I'm involved in. And also, we will have a guest speaker. We have a guy that's been with the NFL. He was a former NFL official of twenty-five years, Mark Baltz. So, he's going to come and speak as well, too. So, if anybody has any, needs any information, you can always reach me at two one six five seven zero three eight nine three for that one. Or you can just Google me. I'm all over the, that Google thing. All right, so that's all I got. End of my report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ready? We're going to move on to approval amendments and financial statements. Mr. Hubble.
Resolved that the minutes of the Board of Education meeting be adopted and all action taken by the Board of Education at said meeting is hereby reaffirmed and approved.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Shearhart, will you call the role, please?
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Roserini.
Yes.
Mr. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Ms. Crawl.
Yes.
Resolved that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby approves the financial statements of receipts and expenditures for the month of February twenty twenty-five, including all purchase orders paid and all then and now statements for the month as submitted.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Shearhart, will you call the role, please?
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Roserini.
Yes.
Mr. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Ms. Crawl.
Yes.
Resolved that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby approves the second reading and adoption of the following board policies as noted.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Shearhart, will you call the role, please?
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Roserini.
Yes.
Mr. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Ms. Crawl.
Yes.
Resolved that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education, in accordance with Ohio Revised Code, section three three two seven point zero two, and the procedures set forth by the Ohio Department of Education, the board, after having considered multiple factors, is authorizing, authorized to determine the impracticality of transportation for students eligible for transportation under RC three three two seven oh one as submitted by the school per the attachment. List on file in the board office.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
May I have a second? Questions, comments? Mr. Shearhart, will you call the role, please?
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Roserini.
Yes.
Mr. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Ms. Crawl.
Yes.
Resolved that the Brooklyn Board of Education authorizes the purchase of construction services with Snyder Recreation, Inc., consisting of playground installation at the Brooklyn Early Childhood Family Resource Center and utilizing the State of Ohio Cooperative Purchasing Program in accordance with Ohio Revised Code three three one three four one A and one two five oh four B. Contract on file in the treasurer's office.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Shearhart, will you call the role, please?
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Roserini.
Yes.
Mr. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Ms. Crawl.
Yes.
Resolved that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby authorizes membership in the Ohio High School Athletic Association for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year per the attachment.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Shearhart, will you call the role, please?
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Roserini.
Yes.
Mr. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Ms. Crawl.
Yes.
Resolved that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby approves the following persons for the twenty-four, twenty-five supplemental, school year supplemental assignment with the provision that such individuals comply with all rules and regulations and State Department of Education regulations pertinent to proper certification and fulfills the requirements of the job description attached to the supplemental contracts contingent upon successful completion of background check and credentialing. Zachary Caleres, basketball.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments?
You can vote him down and I can go tell his mother.
All right.
He got a fire knife. Just so I can see her face.
We can do it.
Mr. Shearhart, will you call the role, please?
Mr. Neal.
It's not me. Listen, I'm good.
Yes.
Mr. Roserini.
Yes.
No, he's a good. Mr. Hubble.
He's a good kid.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Ms. Crawl.
Yes.
Resolved that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby approves the following persons for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year supplemental assignment with the provision that such individuals comply with all rules and regulations and State Department of Education regulations pertinent to proper certification and fulfills the requirements of the job description attached to their supplemental contracts contingent upon successful completion of background check and credentialing. Uh, Robert Taylor, basketball. Rebecca Blaine, soccer. Savannah David, basketball and soccer. John Gregson, soccer. Jada Dominguez, soccer. Zachary Toth, flight football.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Shearhart, will you call the role, please?
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Roserini.
Yes.
Mr. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Ms. Crawl.
Yes.
Resolved that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby accepts the certified retirement of Georgiana Malali effective May thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Shearhart, will you call the role, please?
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Roserini.
Yes.
Mr. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Ms. Crawl.
Yes.
Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby commends Georgiana Malali for her years of service to the students of Brooklyn.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments?
Thank you.
Congratulations.
She's alumni, too.
Uh, Mr. Shearhart, will you call the role, please?
Mr. Neal.
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. Roserini.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Ms. Crawl.
Yes.
Resolved that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby approves the following classified resignation. Uh, Dave Scott effective June third, twenty twenty-five. Demetria Redden effective end of the day four seventeen twenty-five.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Shearhart, will you call the role, please?
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Roserini.
Yes.
Mr. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Ms. Crawl.
Yes.
The Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby commands Dave Scott for his ser- years of service to the students of Brooklyn.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments?
Thank you, Dave.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Another welcome.
I just want to say that I've known Mr. Scott for a long time. Uh, in fifth grade, he moved to Brooklyn and brought, uh, one of my best friends with him. And just kind of let me hang out in his, his office before we'd go back and play and all that stuff. And, uh, he's a great guy. Appreciate everything he's done for us. So, thank you, Mr. Scott.
Oh, Sandy's not here anymore. I say, he, uh, was always very helpful when I was, we're shit. Oh, there she is. So, he was always very helpful during when I was president of Music Boosters. He was, he was our favorite. He was our favorite. Yes.
Uh, Mr. Shearhart, will you call the role, please?
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Roserini.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Ms. Crawl.
Yes.
Resolved that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby approves granting a limited contract to the following certified personnel for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year contingent upon successful completion of background check and credentialing.
May I have a?
Emily Pearlman, second grade teacher, class two, step four.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Shearhart, will you call the role, please?
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Roserini.
Yes.
Mr. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Ms. Crawl.
Yes.
Resolved that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby approves granting a limited contract to the following certified personnel for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year contingent upon successful completion of background check and credentialing. Melie Walker, title one two, uh, seven point seven five hours a day, hundred and eighty-four days, step three.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Shearhart, will you call the role, please?
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Roserini.
Yes.
Mr. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Ms. Crawl.
Yes.
Resolved that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby approves the employment of the following personnel for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year as noted contingent upon successful completion of a background check and credentialing. Emily Sumney.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Shearhart, will you call the role, please?
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Roserini.
Yes.
Mr. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Ms. Crawl.
Yes.
Resolved that the Brooklyn Board of Education hereby approves the following CATS before and after school childcare employees as noted below contingent upon successful completion of background check and credentialing as noted.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments? Uh, Mr. Shearhart, will you call the role, please?
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Roserini.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Ms. Crawl.
Yes.
Resolved that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby approves unpaid leave for the following employees as noted.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Shearhart, will you call the role, please?
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Roserini.
Yes.
Mr. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Ms. Crawl.
Yes.
Resolved that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby amends Resolution two five dash two dash zero seven six to reflect the following, uh, as noted.
Uh, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments?
This is just an amendment to his, his lead and we got some clarification. So, that's why you're seeing it again.
Mr. Shearhart, will you call the role, please?
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Roserini.
Yes.
Mr. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Ms. Crawl.
Yes.
Resolved that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby approves the following persons for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year supplemental assignment with the provision that such individuals comply with all rules and regulations and State Department of Education regulations pertinent to proper certification and fulfills the requirements of the job description attached to their supplemental contracts contingent upon successful completion of background check and credentialing, uh, student leadership excellence. Jeff Jones.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments?
Just a quick description. So, Mr. Jones is, so through our CTE grants, um, last year, Mr. Jones, uh, we were able to get CBI training. And so, career-based, uh, you know, uh, program for students. So, Mr. Jones is going to be heading that up for high school kids next year. This is part of the, the grant and part of the training required for that, for that position. So, it'll be grant funded, but it'll, it'll fill it to our, his, uh, responsibilities as CBI for us next year.
Mr. Shearhart, will you call the role, please?
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
And Mr. Roserini.
Yes.
Mr. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
And Ms. Crawl.
Yes.
Resolved that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby approves the following person for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year supplemental coaching assignments with the provision that such individual comply with all Ohio High School Athletic Association rules and regulations and State Department of Education regulations pertaining to proper certification and/or first aid training and fulfills the requirements of the job description attached to their supplemental contracts. Anthony Starr, volunteer baseball coach.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments?
Is this the young man just graduated not too, a couple of years ago?
He's a freshman. He's a, that's correct. Yes.
Okay.
That's him.
He's a good kid. He is a good kid.
Uh, Mr. Shearhart, will you call the role, please?
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Roserini.
Yes.
Mr. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Ms. Crawl.
Yes.
Resolved that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby authorizes the execution and delivery of a master electric energy sales twenty-four month agreement between the district and power for schools endorsed electric supplier, Engine Resources LLC as noted.
Oh, you're done.
You want to read that whole thing?
As noted.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Shearhart, will you call the role, please?
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Roserini.
Yes.
Mr. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Ms. Crawl.
Yes.
Pursuant to RC three three one nine point oh one and applicable laws, the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby approves an employment contract extension contract with Dr. Theodore Caleres superintendent for the period commencing August first, twenty twenty-six and ending July thirty-first, twenty thirty-one. A copy on file in the treasurer's office.
May I have a motion, please?
Yes.
I will second. Questions, comments?
Ms. Crawl, can I have thirty seconds after the vote?
Maybe.
Thank you.
Let's see how the vote goes.
I know, right?
Mr. Shearhart.
Depending on.
Will you call the role, please?
Mr. Neal.
Um, yes.
Ms. Crawl.
Yes.[1483.55]
Mr. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Mr. Roserini.
Yes.
I want to thank the board. I could not be, um, more proud to be superintendent of this district. We have amazing kids, amazing families. We have an amazing staff, amazing leadership, amazing leadership team. And, uh, I'm very thankful and, and humble to end my career. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You already called the roll, so we can go on. Okay.
I think it's on me. Pursuant to R C three three one nine point oh one and applicable laws, the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby approves extending the employment contract with Robert T. Shearhart for the period commencing August one, twenty twenty-six and ending July thirty-first, twenty thirty. A copy on file in the treasurer's office.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
May I have a second? Questions, comments?
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Come on, I can't. No, I, I, I would also like to thank the board. Um, it has been an honor working here. I enjoy working with all of you. I enjoy working with the whole entire administrative team. Well, some of them.
It's not what they tell me. I'm just saying.
Oh, you missed what you did to.
I know, I know, I know. I can't, I can't imagine what they say about me. I know.
But I, 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 I truly do enjoy working here. I do like it. Um, I like everybody that I'm working with. Um, and I just want to thank the board for the opportunity to give you.
I'll call Ms. Ms. Crawl to, I do want to let people know that one of the reasons that the extensions are a little longer i- is because they're great people. Good to be with, with both of them, all right? But the most important part is we got three years of construction. And, and what I brought to the table and made the board aware of is we got three years, so we need to make sure that they're here. Changing a superintendent, changing a treasurer midstream would, it would be a bad thing. I've been doing this long enough to know that that would be a bad thing. So again, those, these are both well deserved, in my opinion.
They're doing a good job, too. Not just because of the construction.
Right, exactly. No, you're right. No, valid point, but I'm just saying. And, and I made the point to the, to the board in a meeting that it's very important that we do that because this con- that the construction will be three years. We need these people here.
And I'll just add on to that, to have two people that care as much about the district as they do, and, and, and they're, they're always kids focused. Um, Rob does a great job of the numbers for us. Ted, you do an amazing job on everything, so I'm glad that we were able to put this together. So thank you so much, both of you.
Now you can call the roll.
Now you can do it.
Yes, please.
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Ms. Crawl.
Yes.
Mr. Hubble.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Mr. Roserini.
Yes.
Resolve that the Brooklyn Board of Education elects to exercise its right under R C five seven one five point one nine for the filing of a complaint against evaluation of real property as the, the reference property and that the Brooklyn Board of Education authorizes filing of a complaint against evaluation of real property pursuant